So. Oh. I guess it's being recorded.
I just started it, yeah.
So it's not going to be a valid meeting because we don't have a quorum. But maybe you could introduce yourself, Alan, tell us who you are and what you're up to.
Sure. All right, my name is Alan. I am a volleyball referee. That's what I do most of the time. I took this job. I actually had a friend who was a rec director and he said it was a pretty fun job and it was a pretty good schedule for him. So I applied and Erica asked me to do it. And it is working very good with my schedule, so it's something that I can currently do both things very well. I like it so far. And I'm just trying to steer the ship right now and not crash it. You know, I'm slowly learning everything along the way. Every day, something else pops up that I have no idea about. So I have to start, you know, asking questions to everybody to try and put out a fire here, put out a fire there. I'm doing okay.
All right.
I still have a long way to go.
Yeah, it's okay. Thank you. Been there a few weeks. Erica, I love your.
It's like being on one of these boards after six months, you're an expert.
Now, you don't, you just can't see the mess behind me, that's all.
I agree with Ed, the more time in, the easier this this will get.
I will share with all of you, he's really picked up on things pretty quick and eager to just kind of run with stuff, Joe. So and if he doesn't know something, yes. And, you know, I said to him, if your commission is on board and you want to move a program forward and you can make it work, go for it. I support all of that, so.
Is there some kind of a playbook left behind by Bethany and Maureen? Kind of?
Maureen had a lot of binders that were left behind, but the binders. It's it's not like a step by step, here's how you do it. It's really just everything that she did along the way every year, and then she just put it into a binder. So you can learn things from it, but it. It also may not teach you something at the same time, you know.
Right.
Somebody left a folder down there that had a list of do this by this date, do this by this date. That's what I'm looking at now for. The Christmas lights. Still, I'm trying to figure that out. I sent out a few emails today. Santa Glenn, who responded to me, but he said he'll get back to me in a couple of weeks. The rest of the stuff, contact Janet Castle for four H, contact Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts. I'm going to start doing that. All the dates that I had for basketball are useless.
Okay.
Everything was planned for, you know, October 1st, this, this day. And then it turns out none of those dates were good. And everybody was still trying to figure out if they were even having basketball, if they can use the gym, et cetera, et cetera. So we're still. Planning that we have a meeting tomorrow morning at 11:00 where we're going to be talking about hopefully some final concrete. Answers for some of these things so that I have the information to proceed on.
Who is that meeting with?
The other rec departments. Other five towns.
So they're having trouble too with dates.
Yes. So there's no finalized dates for anything. And the plan right now is even. Far different than normal. They are planning for practices in November. And then December, they want to do in-house games. So they don't even want to do inter-town stuff until January. And some of the towns can't do in-house anything because there's just not enough team for kids. So, you know, it's. Sort of challenging to to figure it all out. And then some of the towns that that want to do the inter-town games. They don't want to put their third and fourth grade into that. They just want to leave it in in town the whole year. So I'm not sure that's the group I actually have the most kids signed up for. And it might not be. Against other towns, so I'm not sure how people are going to handle that, you know? I don't know if parents are going to be upset by it.
Well, we're still in a weird time with COVID. Is the problem that all these towns have different COVID rules, different protocols?
I don't think so. I really think it's mostly about availability of the gym.
Okay.
Alan, didn't you say that some of them can't use their gym? So we've been, we've been given the go-ahead by Phil to use the high school gym as long as we follow the mask requirements. But not everybody has been given that, okay.
Right, I think Ashford and Bolton, I think, are the last two towns that do not have use of their gym. And then, you know, like I said before, some towns are in, but they're only in for certain age groups. So it's, there's a lot of planning still to do.
Are our signups done? Or?
Signups were posted before I even came in and they had a final date of October 1st. I pushed that back one week because I only had three people signed up. And then when I sent out the email to to everybody. I had about 10 signed up, but over the last few days I've gotten more, so I probably have around 20 now. But still, in the grand scheme, that's not a lot.
No. We usually have, what, 60 or 80 at least, I think.
Yeah, at least, I would say.
So since you're pushing the whole thing down the road for practices, et cetera, do you just leave registration open for a little while? Is that what you're doing?
Well. From what I've been told. People will continue to register their kids even past the registration date anyway. So I might just. Just sit there and take it, take it, take it, take it until we get to the evaluation day, which is scheduled for October 30th. And even then, somebody who's been helping me with the basketball said that parents will just show up with their kids to the evaluation night, even though they're not registered and they're going to want to sign up that day. So he said bringing a lot of blank forms.
Okay. What do we have to do in that gym? Do the kids have to wear masks in the gym, but they take them off when they play? What's the rule?
No, they have to, if you're in the gym at all, player, spectator, referee, no matter who it is, you have to have a mask on at all times.
Wow. That's gonna be tough.
An anaerobic workout.
All right, well. I know this doesn't sound easy because of COVID and people just maybe not be ready. But I would say, do you put out an email that says registration is open until the 30th? Just so people maybe still come and register?
Yeah. Okay.
Get posted. Where does that all get posted? Is there a?
I put it on Facebook. And. I sent it in the digital backpack.
That's it, digital backpack. Okay.
I tried to adjust the website and I failed miserably, so I just left it as is. I was about to delete the whole thing and I was like, well, an out-of-date registration form is better than no registration form.
Exactly.
I, Pish was trying to help me do it and she was, she was going through it and she was saying that she didn't think my computer had the right version of a program on it because I couldn't put the image I wanted to onto the website. Oh, so, yeah, she, she said, let's try it this way. So we tried it that way and then we almost lost everything and I said, just leave it, leave it.
Okay.
I could try again to get it on the website.
Yeah, I can't help you. I know nothing about Facebook. I'm a looker, not a doer. I know nothing about it.
So I think that's all I got for basketball. Oh, I do have some coaches now. I think I have four coaches.
Okay.
So that's, that reduced some of my stress. I was, I've been talking to Sherry, the Parks and Rec Director at Ashford. And she says that's always the most difficult part of this job all the time is getting coaches to volunteer to do the job. And eventually sometimes it has to come to a point where you just stand there in front of all the parents in a group and you say, if somebody doesn't coach this, I have to cancel the team.
Right, yeah, exactly.
And then that really kind of forces somebody to do it.
Yeah, that's fine, do that. It is hard to get volunteers, nobody wants to do it. These three guys you're looking at have been volunteering since we had hair. Ed's still got hair.
He keeps in the back, keeps in the back.
I had no idea. I had no idea how to play ball. I never played growing up. And all of a sudden I was coach and thank God my first day, Tom was also there and he, and he stepped in and took over. And then Joe, you did the following years. So, yeah, you don't have to know how to play any of these sports to coach them.
The kids know most of it and the other parents help, but they just don't want to be there full-time.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm still trying to figure out what I need to have the coaches do. I've been told a background check and mandated reporter is absolutely necessary. But Maureen had them go through lots of extra stuff. I asked other rec departments and they said, that's not a requirement. So I'm. I'm not sure if I should have them do it or not, like one of them is bloodborne pathogen training and what else is there? CPR. I, I was thinking of. Maybe having the gym supervisor learn all those things and go through the training because he'll be there most of the time.
That's a good idea.
And then maybe, you know, it's not as much of a burden on the coaches, you know? That's, that might be another reason why they don't want to do it is if I sign up for this, then I gotta go do this, 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 this. You know?
Yeah, I didn't realize they were doing that much.
That's a good idea, as long as the away games have somebody who knows. There's usually somebody there, I mean, you can dial 911 or.
Exactly. Exactly.
No CPR.
When you find a Boy Scout in the crowd. All right.
Yeah, that's all I got for basketball. Did you want me to kind of go down the list of the other stuff?
Yeah, go ahead. Go ahead.
All right. So I restarted the volleyball program. That was something that I played in for a long time and I felt like that kind of got pushed to the back burner. So that was like one of the first things I did. I figured out it was pretty easy, so I restarted that. There was an initial turnout. And I'm gonna start it up again on another night. It was always Monday and Thursday, but throughout the years I've noticed that Thursdays was a, is a bad night because the women have a volleyball league that happens on that night. So all the women wouldn't show up. So I said, let's move it to another night and then they can be there. And they all liked the idea, so I think I'm going to open up on Friday nights. And there's also no volleyball anywhere else around here on Friday night, so it gives, we'll do something to do. And that program basically runs itself. Jan Castles run it for a really, really long time. I'm not worried about it, she'll handle it. That's all I got for volleyball. Yoga. I looked on that check sheet that was left for me and it said the person who formally did it, I think her name may have been Kimberly. Not 100% sure on that. She's not doing it right now. I don't know if I should reach out to her again or not. Well, my buddy's wife is a certified yoga instructor. But there's different classifications, I guess. There's adult instructor, child instructor, family instructor. I looked it up online, you don't need to have a certificate in a certain thing. You can just teach it with no certificate. So I said, maybe we'll take her and we'll make it a family yoga thing instead of just only adult, only kids. And I might actually bring more people in. You know, parents might want to come with their older kids and participate. You know, a concern that I would have doing that is if they, if parents start to bring younger kids, they might, you know, start acting, acting up and not want to do it. And that would annoy some of the other people. So there might have to be some strict guidelines concerning that. Thoughts on that?
Perhaps an age cutoff, maybe.
An age limited.
Oh, yeah, it's a good idea.
I'm not sure what that cutoff is, 10 years old, maybe?
Yeah, I was thinking eight, 10, something.
And maybe.
I get it.
I want a five-year-old.
Right. Maybe even offer like a family package price or something like that. That might be another incentive for people.
Yeah, I think what you do is if you have an idea and you want to run with it, you're the guy, you got to run with it.
Okay. Yeah, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna see about the previous instructor first. I do want to ask her, see what she is up to.
Yeah, I think that's.
Not, then I'll go with the other person. Um, Rec Desk, so has Beth, did Bethany ever talk to you about Rec Desk?
We talked about it, but didn't commit to it.
Okay, yeah, so I talked to the salesman from Rec Desk. And he said, I still have this offer for you for $4,200 a year. Basically, what the program does is it, it, it takes it all out of people's hands and makes it everything on the computer. They make the program for you. So when people say, I want to sign up for basketball, they click on it, they pay. Money goes right into your bank account, they sign all the forms online, so there's nothing for people to do at that point. So I guess it's really good for towns with very large numbers of people, which is not this town. So at this point, I think there's no reason to sign up for that. $4,200 is not cheap and we hardly have any programs running at this point anyway. So maybe something, you know, a couple of years down the road when, hey, we got 20 programs running now and maybe looking to keep continuously add more, that would be a good idea to, to go the Rec Desk route. But he will call me back at some point and I'm going to tell him that we're not interested at this time.
I agree.
Hall's Pond. So I was contacted by Tom Bucino, who owns the mill, I guess, and the, the area in between Hall's Pond and the mill. He was looking for a key to get into Hall's Pond because yearly he sends somebody in there to clear out the area in between Hall's Pond and the mill, the grass, the trees, the dam, all that area. And I gave him the key. I went down there myself because he was saying there may not be enough room to get his guy in there with his equipment. Apparently, the shipping container that was purchased to, to go down there and store all the lifeguard equipment, everything that was placed in front of a gate that he has access to, to send the guy in there to do the, the cutting and whatnot. So I had Public Works move the shipping container about 15 feet away from that spot. It's no longer an issue. Uh, he returned the key. While I was there, I checked the lock on the shipping container and it was broken. It was not doing anything, so I took it off. I immediately got a new one and I put it back on. So I don't think we have to worry about the shipping container ever again or the lock on it for quite a while. Willington Wire, that is something that definitely will not be completed on time. I myself lack the skill, do it, so actually was going to ask you guys a question, see what you thought. I know a person who's very, very good with computers, websites, newsletters, all this stuff. Do you think hiring him to do the job, I'm sure he would do it very cheaply? Is that something that's feasible?
I think that there's money in there for an assistant, so ask Erica how that would work. We probably have to have someone apply and then they can be paid out of that account, I think. So, yes, if you've got someone else that can do it and you can't, isn't there a 10-hour-a-week assistant guys that we pay for?
I think we have it in the budget, but.
It is in the budget. I don't know if Erica plans on hiring that position until this current position is, you know, solidified. If you know what I mean. My, my buddy that I was telling you about, who was a Parks and Rec Director for like 10 years, he said, you can't be doing the newsletter because the newsletter takes forever, it uses all your time and you don't have any time to do the, the necessary things that you have to focus on. He goes, I always had my assistants do it, always, always, always. And I'm thinking to myself, that's, that's a great idea. I can't imagine trying to do that and everything else that I'm doing daily. And I, I don't have the skills to do it, honestly.
Twice a year? For?
Four.
Four. I think it's quarterly.
So that, yeah, that's not going to get done on time.
I think Maureen had that assistant that actually did most of that. She knew WordPress and whatnot, remember that little girl from Yukon?
Yeah.
I'm pretty sure she did that, so, so, I mean, you know, we're here to advise and help, but you're downtown. I think, you know, say, hey, Erica, what are the chances? She's probably listening in right now. What are the chances of me hiring an assistant? I don't know if that's a union position, is that a union position, the assistant?
I don't know.
I don't either, but I will.
We could also, we could also do it, do it like a couple of times just to see how it goes and pay for it out of whatever our balance is.
Which I don't know how much that is.
If we have the money for it.
Yeah. I'd rather take it out of the real budget money if we could. If that's possible.
I don't think, so if, if it was a, on there, that would, it would be weird because it would be hiring a person to do the job. That would, money would have to come out of somewhere, but there's nothing on the budget for Willington Wire. You know what I mean? So I, I wouldn't be able to use, hey, Willington Wire money to do this job for me.
Right, but there's a 10-hour-a-week assistance job in there. And I think you could just get a 10-hour-a-week assistant and that's who that would be. That's where, I think that's where it would come from. Mike suggested that we use, you know, the money that we make from programs, but I don't know how much money is in the kitty right now. And then again, I don't know if we could pay somebody out of that. I don't know how that would work. That's an Erica downtown accounting kind of thing.
Well, we also, your friend might not want to be the actual assistant either, 10 hours a week. He might just want to do the wire from home and not do anything else, which wouldn't really be an assistant position, I guess. I don't know, or marshal assistant?
But we'd have to figure out a way to pay that, you know, out of the payroll item, I think.
I can ask tomorrow when I go in.
Yeah.
She says. I, I know this, I mean, this, this guy is real good and it wouldn't even take him that long. I said, he might even do it for 50 bucks, you know? That's a kind of a guy.
Right, but I'm, I'm not sure how you, I don't know how we allocate that money to give to him. So you can present it to Erica both ways. If I can get somebody to help me with this, how do I get that money to him? Or do we just do it as, you know, part of the budget as someone that's a 10-hour-a-week assistant? Or maybe he just becomes a three-hour-a-week assistant or a five-hour-a-week?
We have the right to write checks for what? I think we can write checks for up to like five grand without asking for permission from anybody.
But, but is that, but it's different by a scoreboard than it is to pay somebody for services.
No, no, I think it isn't because we, there were some programs, we didn't have to put out the bid, like fencing or that's basically a service. So whether it's fencing or whether it's creative writing, it's a service.
Okay.
So I think we could just write checks out of the balance, but like you say, if we could get it.
Find out first.
If we could get it out of the budget, it would be better because then we're using the taxpayer money versus, let's say, our money. But, yeah, yeah, I'll ask.
And I don't, I don't know how much money there really is for Parks and Rec right now. So there, I've had, having many conversations about it because I'm trying to figure it all out. And the number that rolls over, I don't know. Apparently, that number is given to me at the end, you know, June 30th, July 1st. So I don't know that number. Also, apparently, now, it's only with Parks and Rec, the numbers are inaccurate when you're talking about the revenue and the expense sheets because sometimes you're paying for things and then the year changes and then you're getting money in or vice versa. So it's, it's all off. You know, I hit that one sheet in 2018 and it said Parks and Rec lost $22,000.
Exactly.
And clearly, that was not the case, you know?
I could never read that thing, I couldn't figure it out. I know the girls, the girls had a handle on it, but I was, we never knew how much we had in there. We had a good, we had a good, we had a good cushion, so it didn't really matter, but I don't know, the cushion might have disappeared.
Yeah, I know we spent money on a couple of things towards the end because remember last year we got worried that if we left money in there it may be taken away or used in some other way or forced back into our budget? So I don't know what's in there. I know Maureen always could figure it out. But I'll, you know, it's, it's going to be hard now to ask somebody how to figure it out because I don't know if we're being told the proper way to figure it out. It's math, it's got to be an easy way to do it. What do we call that fund? A reserve fund, is that what that was called?
Well, the town has a reserve.
One balance.
What was it called? Fund balance.
Fun balance.
Okay.
Leave the D off, it's appropriate.
Okay. So the next thing that I had was about the porter potties or the portables, I guess they, they like to call them. I had, I actually called, I think his name is Don Bissett. He's the owner of the company that does the porter potties for us. And I was calling him because somebody had lost a wallet and they thought they left the wallet in the porter potty. Uh, it turns out he came out to the town office building the day before that guy lost his wallet, so that wasn't a thing. But he's, he said, I'm glad I'm talking to you, I was going to call you anyway. He said, the River Road Porter Potty, he normally empties once a week, but every time he goes there, it's almost overflowing. So he recommended that it gets emptied twice a week. And I, I didn't even look at the, the, the balance sheet or expenditure, whatever. I didn't look at it, I just said, how much is it? He said, it's an extra $30. And I said, go ahead and do it. I figured it was one, one more month before he had to pick it up.
Sure.
You know, so it's going to be an extra $120. So I probably should have looked at that, but I didn't, I figured we'd figure it out. But overflowing porter potty is not good. Then he told me that someone called him, it was either last weekend or two weekends ago. Then he told me that someone called him. It was either last weekend or two weekends ago. Somebody called him and said the porter potty had been knocked over at River Road. And that when he got there, it was picked back up. The whole thing was covered with waste. Inside, outside. He said there was a cleanup fee for that. And he didn't tell me how much the cleanup fee was. That's why, Joe, if we can go on Thursday to look at the security footage, it's what I wanna. Look to see, you know, because.
Sure.
He said it was this day and I said, oh, well, we have security footage that we can look at. And then he kinda said, well, it may not have been that day. It may have been this day. So I started to think, you know, does he really, does he really know? Is this something that really happened?
Right. All right, we can look. I'm, I'm not, there's three cameras there. I'm imagining one must aim down towards the road, the entry, so. If nothing else, we won't be able to tell who it was, but you'd be able to tell if it was flipped over. You'll get that in. So we'll look at it.
The thing that I don't really get is, shouldn't he have contacted us when, if something like that happened anyway? The porter potty gets knocked over and he has to pick it up and clean it for an additional charge. That seems like something we should know about.
Yeah, unless he, you know, that it was the day he was doing the standard pump out and he was already there, so. He figured it was gonna be part and parcel. I don't know. I don't know what a cleanup. Consists of, but I'm glad.
I know a lot of people use that. I think the reason it's overflowing is not necessarily from the people there. It could also be from people just stopping along the way. And one way.
That's what he said.
One way we could.
Off the highway.
We could solve that by allowing him when he places it to place it somewhere within the field, like over by the backstop of the baseball field. So that nobody's gonna park and walk all the way across to use it from the street. Kids play in there well, because that's where it is. But people driving by aren't gonna walk all the way across the field to get to it.
That's a good idea.
Anyway, Mike. Really, Mike, is they gotta get the truck over there every time to pick it up and drop it off and.
Twice a year, once he.
What he means to pop out, Eddie's talking about the pump out.
Oh, the pump out.
But, 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 but. If you can, you Alan would have to get an access and he could drive around the path. You could get a truck on that path, I think, no?
Actually, I didn't walk around the whole track. I don't know how big that area is.
It's eight feet wide.
Just run a hose up.
What if we move them so that they're not in view from the road? Right now you can see them from Route 32. What if we move them further south? Towards, closer towards the, um.
Like behind the hill on the roadside.
Yeah, just as you go further down towards the commuter parking lot. Just somewhere that's less obvious from the road.
Yeah, it may cut down on.
You think about it though, those things are generally for 10 workers a day. That's how they're set up. I've been down there and there's 50 kids on the field. And their parents are around, so I think a lot of the contribution is from people in the field. There's a lot of soccer kids down there.
Yeah, maybe.
So do you think that going forward, we should have, leave it at two cleanings per week then? Even if we have it moved?
I think we gotta take the suggestion of the guy that's cleaning it because you don't want somebody in there. I mean, you've lifted those things in fields and they're full to the top and it's disgusting and. You know, that makes a parent say, what's going on here? These guys aren't taking care of the field. They're not taking care of the porta potty and my kid's using it, et cetera. It's gotta get emptied. I hate to put this on you, but you could go the day before he pumps it out. And lift the lid and do a, uh, you know, you don't have to be a scientist to know if it's full or not.
That's what the assistance for, right?
Wow, he's a union guy already. But I mean, that's, that'd be one way to figure it out. Bring a pair of rubber gloves, but just lift the lid and see what it looks like.
What is our, did, did, did you look at the sheet? Do you know what our expenditure is on that thing for the nine months it's there? Is it 500 bucks, 600 bucks?
I don't, I don't, I didn't, I didn't look at it. I'm not sure.
Just curious, because if it's another 30 bucks a week and it's only 200 bucks for the year, I mean, that's nothing.
Sorry, go ahead, Joe.
Well, they're renting it to us for a flat fee and then they pump it weekly. Is that what they're doing?
Yeah.
I believe.
And there's a charge for the pump out. So we're, we're paying two fees.
I'm not sure there is a charge for the pump out. The, like, I think you may get one cleaning per week. Lump rolled in with the cost that she, of the rental. Because he, he made, this is a extra. Service.
Okay.
So it's down there for what? How many weeks? How many weeks can we keep it there?
I believe it's supposed to get picked up in the beginning of November, that one. Yeah, all three of them get picked up at different points. The one at, uh, Hall's Pond got picked up.
Right.
Into last month.
Like June, June to, June to November, five months maybe?
River Road must be there eight months.
I hope he's on the up and up on all of this because if he's backtracking as to whether or not it fell down on one day or another day. I would like to check the video. Was it ever tipped over at all?
Yeah, well, that's an easy one to figure out.
So, and then we can, we could pick this up next spring. And we just, I, I could drive by, you know, I go by every day. If I have to, I could stop by several days a week and just take a peek. And, um, because I don't know, maybe the guy's boat payment.
What's that?
Lift the lid, Eddie?
I don't know, whatever.
Is, is that one a big handicap toilet? That's a pretty big print, footprint, isn't it?
I don't think the one there is handicapped.
Big one.
River Road's not a big handicap unit?
I don't think so. I think we bring one in for, uh, Wellington Day, but I don't think it's typically handicapped.
All right, because that one will be hard to flip over.
Yeah, you can't tip that over, no.
All right.
I did actually say that. I said, it must be very hard to tip one of those over and he goes, well, it would take a lot of strong men. So, I mean, it seems like either it had to be a vehicle or. A bunch of really big tough guys came over and pushed it over, but then he said it was picked back up. Who would tip it over then pick it back up?
Yeah, it doesn't sense.
As the hoop guys were playing a prank on their friends, they flipped them all over with them in and then tipped it back out because they were nervous.
Mike, you know what? Those kids all seem to be.
Angels.
Be pretty good kids. They're damaging stuff. The basketball nets, it was courts at one end and there are the toilets at the other end. I don't know.
We'll find out. Well, we'll take a look in the camera and see. We'll take a look in the video and see.
And just so you guys know, I've driven by, I've driven by several times the past summer. Late in the evening, eighth, you know, I say 8:30, 9 o'clock. Those basketball courts are jamming. That is a tremendous success. They are just jamming with kids. They love it. So I, I just think those kids are, you know, I know there are a lot of adults and whatnot or older, you know, young adults. But I just tend to think they're a little more responsi- I like to think they're more responsible than that. I just do. I don't know.
We'll find out. We'll take a peek. But I'm, I'm writing some of these things down, Alan, so that we can revisit them.
Okay. Erica sent me a message, uh, about the CIP. Which is coming up in January. So I just thought maybe we could talk about that unless you wanna save that for the next meeting.
Well, we have to come up with the, what we want for our capital improvement projects and I bet we just take what we did last year and move it forward a year, right?
Did we have? We must have had some.
Yeah.
The one that she told me was to take out the volleyball court. At River Road and put in a pickleball court.
Right. And I think we were granted that.
Yes, that is, that is happening. The only, the only question that I had about that, which I really didn't understand, was. Why are we taking out the volleyball court? Why aren't we just adding a pickleball court?
Because it seemed like that wasn't getting any use. And that's a perfect spot for pickleball. It was a trade off. So keep, you know, you can even look on the video and see over the summer, but I know you're a volleyball guy that. Maureen did not think that was getting much use. It was more for kids making sandcastles and cats finding a place to go to bathroom.
I've only seen, I've only seen it used twice.
By a cat?
Volleyball.
I was just thinking, you know, that, that's something that possibly could have been used in the summertime. You know. To make a program, not, not just let it be like show up and play whenever you want. Hey, we're offering sand volleyball. Every this day, that day, or tournaments or something like that.
You know?
Mostly you have to lead, lead the people in and, you know, in order to get the use for it.
This is the first season that we have lights on, you know, for the recreational areas. So having lights makes basketball more popular. It extends it. It could do it to volleyball, but. Pickleball just seemed to be, you know, something that Maureen was into. I know you're into volleyball. We just have to see what is gonna get more use. I don't know what would get more use. If you can create a sand volleyball program. And we can put that pickleball somewhere else, great. I just don't know where else we'd put the pickleball.
Well, there's a, there's like a blueprint on the back of my wall at the, uh. You know, at the Parks and Rec thing and. It, there are supposed to be tennis courts that were supposed to be put in at some point. And it was past the, the end of the basketball courts.
Yep. Which we passed on and I think in the most modern version that was taken off. I'd have to look. I have one at the, I have a print at the shop, so they keep updating it. And I'm not sure if it got left in or not.
One of the things about tennis is that. Um, there's tennis courts up at Yukon, there's tennis in Stafford. I think we, there was discussion at one point, the people, if they want places they can go play. I don't know.
I think Alan's talking about.
Yeah, pickleball being very popular now.
Right, so you're talking about trading off the tennis courts for pickleball, Al? Is that what you're talking about?
That's what I was thinking, you know.
We've looked at different things, right?
Yeah, tennis is, tennis will, a, a roller skate park and tennis, I think we all decided a long time ago, not worth it. If we have.
I was just thinking. It makes addition over exchange makes more sense in my head, but if that's.
That's a good idea. That's a good idea. Like between the basketball court and the outfield fence of the, uh, baseball field. If we can dig down, you know what kind of junk is in there. It's places loaded with concrete slabs. It's an old, it's an old, uh, dump site for the state. And they used to dump concrete slabs and we had trouble. Pushing that stuff around. I don't know how deep they gotta go for pickleball. What do you gotta go down? You gotta go down a foot probably at least.
You got a hoop court, so pickleball would work.
Yeah, it should. If there's, it is enough room for it. I don't know, pickleball.
You got no light there. You know what I mean? That was part of it too. You got lights over volleyball now? So we'd have to add lights at pickleball, which.
You don't think there's enough, you don't think there's enough bat wash from the basketball court?
Nah, they're not. Those lights are built not to do that.
Let's go down there at night and take a look. I'll be right back.
Now, something else we always talked about was getting. A cable modem at that, uh, little recreational concession stand so that you could. Look at the video from your office. That's something we should still try and do.
I told, I think it's a great idea.
It's, it, it'd also be part of the website where you could say, hey. Click on this camera to see what's going on at River Road today.
That might be a good idea because I know a lot of times people don't wanna go and walk their dog, let's say. If there's 2,000 people down there playing soccer.
Yep. Yeah, it's, I, it's all positives. There's nothing negative about it. But it's another expenditure.
So I, I had a possible idea for this. I don't know if it's a good idea, but. Uh, I was just thinking about the outdoor workout area. I walked over there, I looked at it. And I thought. This is kinda cool. I don't know, I've never seen anything like this before, but there are a lot of factors here. That would make people not use it. The weather. Uh, you know, if it's too hot, all the metal machines are, nobody's gonna wanna touch them. You know, you're gonna get burned. If it's a little rainy, you can't use the machines, you know? So I was thinking something that may not even be super expensive if we could build a covering for that, you know, like, uh.
Oh.
Uh, I can't think of the word, almost like a lean to, but just over that, you know?
Yeah, like a little pagoda. Wouldn't have to be that big, four, six by six columns and a roof.
You haven't noticed the size of it? What's it, 20 feet square?
Not that big.
Not that big. Is it?
We compacted it all together. I do see people use that once in a while. You know, like somebody will walk and then use a machine, but you're right. If you had a roof over it, that might make it better for people.
And then you could, and then that's also gonna slow down the degradation of those machines as well, you know? Being exposed to the elements all the time, you know? They, they might last much longer. And if we built it bigger over that, then you could even add more machines under it. And make it even bigger potentially.
Yeah, I think it would make it more attractive if. There was a roof over it. I agree. So I wrote that down.
If, if we all, if we did like it, then that's something that we could think about putting on the CIP.
Yeah. Yeah, good idea.
Great. No, I, I agree. I think that's great and that's not a lot of money, right, Mike?
Hmm, lumber has come down, but we'll see.
But would it be a pre-made pavilion like we put up? You know, you know, over by the refreshment stand? That, or that could be something.
I mean, it could be a kit, but.
But it doesn't have to be. It's not that big.
Yeah. I'll, I'll stop tomorrow and I'll stop tomorrow and take a look at it, see how big it is.
Okay, that's a good idea.
I think, I think there was a, one of the years down the road on the CIP thing was to put. Lights around the walking track. I think that's something that I saw on there for in the future.
That was recent. We start, we thought about that two years ago.
I think we gotta put, put it down in certain years, like what was our priority and then further out. Maybe we bumped the, maybe we. Well, do we, maybe we bumped that, the exercise, uh, roof. Ahead of the pickleball court, if it's less money. Oh, no, we got the pickleball court.
Yeah, they granted us that money.
The pickleball court is happening, I guess, from what I've been told. That's like the, the next year up.
Yeah, but if we change it to not an exchange, but in addition, does that make a difference? Does that make the cost go up? Cause the base isn't there? I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know.
This could be changed. I thought it was kinda set in stone. That's what Erica kinda made it sound like.
I think it is. And I think it. So we figured that, we figured to take volleyball out, but. I know this seems crazy, but you could put pickleball in where volleyball is and then do volleyball down the road. I, that sounds like something the state would do. Let's tear this down and then rebuild it somewhere else. But, I, you know, when we decided to do pickleball, that volleyball court was not getting used. But now that we got a Parks and Rec director that's a volleyball guy, I, I mean, I get it. You would create programs for it.
Did we have somebody slated for this construction?
God, I don't think so.
We must have gotten prices from somebody.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know. I'm sure Maureen got prices.
We would have had to have a number from somebody to put it into CIP. Maybe, maybe Knights or something.
I'm not sure how she developed the number or we just guessed maybe. I'm not sure how she developed the number, or we just guessed maybe. We beat the number up.
That's something I need to do.
Maybe, yeah. Maybe if you can find a number or, I wonder if Maureen, Maureen, you might be able to call Maureen and ask her.
Yeah, I have.
She could probably tell you.
How she developed it?
Yeah, she had somebody slated. I mean, I'm sure we didn't just shoot a number off the top of our heads.
Yeah, we would never do that.
Well, not, not out of our field, maybe in our field, but not out of our field.
Yeah. I think there's, wasn't it like 40 grand? What's the number?
I'm not sure.
Yeah.
But I can get that number for the next meeting.
Okay. I'm gonna look real quick.
Only, what, three weeks away now?
Yes. We'll make sure we have more bodies.
Alright, so we'll come back and talk about that again.
Okay.
So, uh, something I'd like to bring up, one last thing. So I keep hearing about scoreboard. Um, is that something that, I have no information about it, except some scoreboard somewhere needs to be replaced. Is that something?
It was never there.
At least after now, or can it be put off until next spring?
At this point, it's next spring. It's the building that your office is in, that ball field.
Okay.
On the hill, we were gonna put a s-, a small scoreboard, I think we decided on, not, just like the one that's at River Road. Not too far from the concession stand.
Four by eight?
Yeah.
It's new. That would be new. Think we were using, weren't we using the Lions money for that?
Yep, I'm pretty sure we were.
Lions Club, Mansfield Lions Club gives us money every year for some, some good reason and, uh, we're gonna use that money to get that, to buy that scoreboard. So that would probably come out of the fund balance.
Speaking of, uh, the field in back of the town office building. Um, I have been talking to Anthony.
Eldridge.
Last name.
Eldridge.
Eldridge.
Yeah, he takes care of the field there. And I have been talking to him because I got a complaint. From somebody who plays in the baseball, uh, rec league that he's in, adult baseball rec league. Saying that the field was unacceptable and that I needed to come out there immediately and fix the field. Because there was a puddle in it. And there was garbage down there. And I told the guy, you know, I will pick up the garbage, which I did. But then I said, there's, there's nothing I can do about the puddle, you know, and at the time, I didn't even know that it was Anthony that, that took care of the field.
Right.
You know, and this guy was actually kind of giving me a hard time, so I said, I can't control the weather, you know, and that kind of made him stop a little bit. But Anthony, uh, I talked to him a lot. He said. Throughout the years, Maureen had gotten him like a truckload of clay. And that's what he used to, to fix the field, but he hasn't gotten it in two years. So I told him, well, that's something that we can do in the future for sure. And I looked on the expenditure sheet and. No money has gone to that ma-, the maintenance of that field. So when spring rolls around, I think that's a number one priority. I was just wondering if, uh. If that's something that could be purchased now. But then not have it delivered until next spring. So that we would get a new amount of money for. You know, another replenishment of funds for the ball field, you know? That make sense?
Yeah, I know what you're saying, because.
Because I don't know if all that will roll over and then we'll say, hey, we have instead of $700 for that ball field, now we have $1,400. I don't, no, I don't know if it works that way.
I don't know, but you think there's a little bit of money right now for that clay, right? Is that what you're thinking?
Yeah, yeah, because none of it's been used. I think it's $700 in maintenance for that field. That's what's allocated to it.
All right, well, there's a couple of things going on here. One was, we promised Tony Eldridge a scoreboard for that field. And we haven't done it. And he does do the maintenance. And I know that Maureen has, I think they rented him a, a, a little payloader or something once. A machine of some sort or he rented it. So he generally does do the maintenance. He's created drainage there and taking care of the place, so. I see what you're saying. If you can get him clay and get him stuff this year in this budget, but deliver it next year, or if you have to get it delivered this year. It's clay. It's not gonna go away.
Yeah, that's true. I guess I could always just call up and ask him if he, if he wants to do it now, you know?
Yeah.
When, you would have to.
He's a good guy.
He is.
Figure it all out and do all the work himself, I guess.
Yeah, I'm sure they buy a couple cases of beer and they go down there and spread stuff around, but I'm sure he has a few bodies helping him. You don't want to lose him. He's helpful.
Tony's, we all like coached him and stuff like that, go through the years when he was growing up.
Yep.
And he's made a contribution to the town by helping, by, you know, working down there at the field and helping out coaching. So he'll, I'm sure he'll be, he'd be excited if he could get, even if we could do it now.
And maybe tell him that that.
And the scoreboard. Okay, so the scoreboard is something for next spring, but that doesn't even come out of the, the budget for the fields. That's totally different.
The Lions gave us five grand and I think that covers it.
Okay.
At least the cost of the scoreboard. What's that, Eddie?
That in a separate account, where is that money now?
I think it's a line.
Gotta be in our fund balance.
Right.
Okay. So that's, that's all I got to report on right now.
Okay.
All right, so let's have, um. I just wanted to go over the, um. Wellington Day. Okay, so we did, we did the hamburgers and hot dogs and stuff like that. Everything went well. I thought it was very well attended. And Mike, uh, and Mike helped me great, you know, I, we all worked together and, um. And, uh, it was what, Mike and Rocco, right, was there too, right, Mike?
Mike.
And, um, the three of us were making burgers. Who was it?
Mike Iacampal.
Yeah, anyway. Okay, Mike, so I just want to know, all I'd like to know is find out is how many hamburgers? How many boxes did we buy? How many boxes did we sell at the end of it all? Because I think we sold off the excess just by the box. Uh, maybe it was Mike and his wife bought it. And, um, but just so that we can fine tune it for next year, because we can only make so, there's only so many people that go to that event. There's only so many hamburgers you're gonna sell. And if we sell out, that's okay too. It's okay to sell out at like 2 o'clock in the afternoon, if it goes to 3 or something like that, because. We sold an awful lot and I just feel we could do better than $350. And I think a lot of the profit was lost in the excess. Hamburger rolls, hot dog rolls and extra burgers and stuff that we didn't need to buy. And that we can't really freeze, uh, necessarily from one year to the next. So if we could just fine tune that a little bit, I think we would, um, uh, we would do better financially, that's all.
Yeah, somebody must know how many dogs we sold and how many burgers, right?
Yeah, I know we went through like two big packages of hot dogs. I think they're like 60 each, so we probably sold around 100 hot dogs. And then Mike, we sold what, a couple hundred hamburgers? But I don't know how many boxes we have.
As I recall, I think she told me she bought something like 300 hamburgers and 350 hot dogs, something like that. And I know we had a couple of bo-, we had at least a box of each left, so I don't know the exact number, but. We probably sold 200 hamburgers at least.
Yeah, so maybe if, let's look, maybe this coming year. Because I can see the writing on the wall already. Then when we do it again, maybe we buy like no more than, if we think we bought 350 last year, this past year. We buy 300 or something, just cut it back a little bit. One box less. And, um, and then, you know, I think, and then we had lots of rolls. I know we had just rolls coming out of our ears. The other thing is. The, the hot dog rolls were not that fresh. And, um, we got our rolls, we got all the stuff from, uh, Bogner's, Bogner's. I mean, I think they, you know, I don't know. I, I just want something just to look into, uh, maybe we get it from Big, some of the rolls from Big Y or something like that, where they have greater turnover of their breads. The bread, but, um, some of the rolls just weren't fresh and I just felt bad about using those rolls. So just some thoughts for next year, um, and, uh, and that's it.
I, I like what I'm hearing, because Eddie just made himself the head of the Wellington Day Food Committee. Ed, come on. Ed, this was, this is being recorded.
The head chef.
What I'm gonna do is schedule your, schedule your New Hampshire trip for some of the weekend.
We don't even have a place in New Hampshire, Ed. It's all a lie. Look, I think it was impromptu this year and it was hard with COVID, but we got it together, the meeting before next year's Wellington Day. And really say, okay, it's this group, we're gonna do it. Yeah, we'll have a better, we'll have a much better presentation.
I mean, I act, you know, surprise, surprise, I actually had fun doing it and, um. Was, it was good to get out and see all the people. And I, I think we pretty much sold as much as you could sell. You really, for the amount of people there, we sold a heck of a lot of hamburgers and hot dogs. And, um, so maybe we make notes from year to year and fine tune it and go from there. That's all.
I like the enthusiasm. We'll make it better next year.
Okay, good, all right.
All good. All right, Al, what about you? You all set? All right, boys. Till next time.
All right, see you in three weeks.
All right, take care. Al, nice to meet you.
Yeah, good work.
Guys as well.
I'll see you Thursday.
Thank you.
Bye bye.
Bye.